And now I'd like to call to order the December 4th, 2019 Assistant Housing Governing Board meeting. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Board member DeCecio. Board member Garcia.
Here.
Board member Nowakowski. Board member Pastor. Board member Stark. Board member Waring. Board member Weisehan.
Here.
Board member Williams.
Here.
Vice Chair Guardado.
Here.
Chairwoman Gallego.
Here.
I'm here.
Councilwoman Past- Board member Pastor is here. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes from June 26, 2019?
Motion.
I move, I second.
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes passed unanimously. Motion to approve the resolution?
Resolution number 200, adopting a significant amendment to the Housing Department's 2019 '20 Annual Agency Plan to include provisions to implement the Choice Neighborhoods Transformation Plan. I move for the motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Do we have an additional board member on the phone?
Yeah, I'm here.
Welcome, Councilman DeCecio.
Um, Michael Nowakowski.
We have both Councilman DeCecio and Nowakowski on the phone. Welcome.
That's correct. Yes.
We next move to Housing item number five. Do we have a motion on number five?
Resolution number 201, authorizing the city manager to submit a U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development Section 18 disposition application for 40 vacant scattered sites, single-family homes if approved, recommending that city council authorize the city manager to proceed with the disposition and take all actions and execute all documents as may be necessary or appropriate to implement the provisions of this resolution. I move for the motion.
Second.
We have a very impressive motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. We will now adjourn the meeting. Thank you to Board member Weisehan for your service. We call to order the city council former meeting, formal meeting for December 4th. Will our city clerk please call the roll?
Councilman DeCecio.
Here.
Councilmember Garcia.
Here.
Councilman Nowakowski.
Here.
Councilwoman Pastor. Councilwoman Stark. Councilman Waring. Councilwoman Williams.
Here.
Vice Mayor Guardado.
Here.
Mayor Gallego.
Here.
We have an interpreter here with us today. Would you please introduce yourself, Mario?
Thank you, Mayor. My name is Mario Barajas. I'm going to be serving as today's Spanish interpreter and I'm going to be making a brief Spanish announcement. Buenas tardes a todos. Mi nombre es Mario Barajas. Voy a estar sirviendo como su intérprete de español. Si acaso alguien necesitará un intérprete, pueden acudir los servicios hacia atrás a cualquier miembro del personal de la ciudad. Muchas gracias. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mario. Would the city clerk please read the 24-hour paragraph?
The titles of the following ordinances and resolution numbers on the agenda were available to the public at least 24 hours prior to this council meeting and therefore may be read by title or agenda item only. Ordinances number G 6643 through 6649, S 46193 through 46210, and 46212 through 46227, and Resolutions 21799.
Thank you so much. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion on mayoral and city council board and commission nominations?
Yes, we have a motion to approve mayor and city council boards and commissions nominations.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Passes unanimously. We have a group of distinguished Phoenicians here to be sworn in. Please raise your right hand. I state your name, do solemnly swear.
I solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona.
And the Constitution and laws of the State of Arizona.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the same.
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And defend them against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of the office of.
Discharge the duties of the office of. The Phoenix Department's Commissioner.
Pride.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Thank you for your service to the city of Phoenix. The council members would love it if you would come behind so they can personally congratulate you.
Thank you.
of Phoenix. We next move to agenda item number two, the reappointment of municipal court judges. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion?
Yes, we have a motion to approve reappointment of municipal court judges. Notes wearing in will be on December 18.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Passes unanimously and we will look forward to seeing the members of our judiciary to take their oath at our next council meeting. We next move to the liquor license portion of our agenda. The city of Phoenix advises the state on these items. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion?
Yes, we have a motion to approve items 3311, noting item 12 has been withdrawn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Wonderful, passes unanimously. City clerk, are we ready for ordinances, resolution, new business, and planning and zoning?
Yes, Mayor.
Vice Mayor, do we have a motion?
Yes, we have a motion to approve items 13 through 66, except the following: 16, 23, 28, 35, 64, 62, 65, and 66. Item 63 has been withdrawn, and excluding these items for public comment, item 60.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any changes or additions to the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, roll call.
Aye.
DeCecio.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
Yes.
Pastor. Stark. Waring. Williams. Guardado.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously. Item 16 is a public hearing on the proposed annexation of 17th Avenue and Desert Hollow Drive. We will open the public hearing. We have one card available to speak if requested. Do any council members have any questions on this one? We will close the public hearing. We will take action on this item at a future council meeting. We next move to item 28. Item 23. We next move to item 23. Do we have a motion on item 23?
Yes, there is a motion to approve item 23.
Second.
Any council member comments? Roll call.
DeCecio.
Oh, Mayor, just a, just a quick comment on item 23, if I could.
Please.
That is, you know, that's with the league. I mean, it, when you have funds, limited funds, it comes down to competition of services. And we've got, you know, lobbyists that we've got on staff, we've got lobbyists that we've paid that are out of staff. Now you've created a third layer here. And from my end of it, those monies could be better spent on, you know, services within the public. So I'm going to be voting no, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
Councilman Nowakowski.
Mayor, I'm not sure if our staff's here to answer some questions.
We will welcome Frank McKeon, our Government Relations Director.
Righty.
For a question on item 23 related to the League of Cities.
So basically, I just wanted to ask, for the last year, we weren't members of the league. So what happened, or what didn't happen, for not being members of the league? Did we end up not being a part of some big grants or some type of law that affected the city of Phoenix that otherwise would have hurt us if we were members of the league?
Mayor, council members, Councilman Nowakowski. The best way to put it is, we had a good legislative session last year, but we worked in conjunction and partnership as a stakeholder with the league on many items, from the Wayfair implementation, which helped charge, which handled the NEXUS taxation on online purchases, to digital goods implementation, working with them on Airbnb. We still worked with them because they are convening the other 90 cities and towns in the state. So they're an important stakeholder, and not being a member at the table, we, you know, worked hard as stakeholders to be a part of it. Being at the table as a member would have helped us navigate things more directly with the other cities and towns.
And being a member, I mean, one of the things that I've been hearing in the news is that our water, that the city of Phoenix have been good stewards in preserving water. And we have a bank for the next 100 years. So because of the good stewardship of the city of Phoenix, thinking, being visionaries, thinking of the future, we have a water supply that if we continue to grow the way that we're growing, it would last over 100 years. And, you know, thanks to the leadership of our past members like Claude Maddox and Thelda Williams, that's sitting on, on the dais right now, that have been strong advocates in making sure that happens. I, I've been hearing that cities and towns are coming after our water also, right? So how would this help us to prevent those towns and cities not to come after our water supply?
Mayor, Councilmember Nowakowski, great question. There, the challenges facing the state of Arizona over water supply over the next 25 and 100 years are great. And the city of Phoenix has been very forward-thinking in their future planning of water supply, water retention, water, you know, water conservation. And so throughout the state, different regions, not just cities and towns, but other regions and other industries are looking and fighting for water and water supply. And so, again, being at the table with these communities helps create the relationships to work through these issues. But this is, this will be an issue that we work hard on and we'll have to be approaching it at a regional level, you know, at MAG and AMOa and other entities and the state legislature. But also, just continuing to be the leaders that this city's been is going to probably be our number one place.
And just for the record, we, we have your staff, which is our government relations team, that advocates for the city of Phoenix at the state level. We also have two other, what is it, policy groups that we've hired, that we spend close to, what, 1 point, almost $1.3 million in those two groups, right?
Yes, sir.
That we use to advocate to make sure that our city is protected when it comes to state laws and that we advocate to make sure that we get our fair share of tax revenues and all that. And then we're being asked, on another end, that our solid waste is increasing and our fees, and that we're going to have to look at ways of keeping our recycle and all that. So I'm hearing from the last meeting, individuals are asking us to be good stewards with our, our funding. And, and I think one of these, this membership here, over the last year, really didn't hurt us at all. I don't think we took them a big hit. I know in my district, we have programs in South Phoenix and in Maryvale that are youth programs or incentive programs and all that, that are being cut. And I, I just don't feel that I can vote or justify the vote of, of this membership that we've already have, individuals, two lobbyist groups, and, and our staff that actually does that. So I'm going to be voting no for those reasons. And I believe that we need to be good stewards and figure out how to tackle that solid waste that all of our residents are going to be affected if we raise it by 12%.
Thank you.
Or 24%, sorry.
We'll go to Councilman Waring first.
Thank you. So if I were sitting in the audience, I'd wonder, how much does this cost? It's 230 grand, roughly. I, the way I look at it, I do it with my budget at home too, what could I have bought for that 230 grand that would be a tangible asset? And here's one example. You could buy a stoplight at an intersection that's really dangerous, right? We have a lot of pedestrian deaths and so forth. So ask yourself, would you rather have a safer intersection, or would you rather have whatever we get out of the League of Cities and Towns? I'm also a taxpayer, so I basically can put myself in the sitting in the audience role as well. And I'm actually on the council too. So I have two different perspectives on this. And I've also been a state senator, so I've been lobbied by the League of Cities and Towns. I can tell you, you as a taxpayer, what you're getting out of the league is nothing. So you could say, well, I don't like stoplights or something, but put, pick something else, another police officer or something. That's what's not going to happen because we're doing this. Now, I was very happy we were out of the league for a year. That saved us, I think that yearly dues are 150, and then this, I think, is for 18 months. But I just, I hate to see stuff on there for the reasons that Bo Sal and Councilman Nowakowski said. It's competing with other stuff. And then, we got a lot of other priorities, you know, raising fees all over the place, but we're still doing stuff like this. And so, just food for thought, I'm going to vote no. I assume it's going to pass, or it wouldn't be on the agenda. But, you know, it's, it's a little bit frustrating to see after I thought we made a good decision a year or so ago. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Williams.
I want to ask staff, why a year and a half?
Mayor, Councilmember Williams, a lot of this was about the timing of when we received the invoice typically. We receive the renewal invoice in the spring. So in order to just be forward on the, on the payment, the annual membership goes July to June 30th. And so, this payment ordinance would be to pay from January through July 1st, or June 30th, and then for next year's annual membership. So because we would be receiving, we'll be receiving the league invoice for next year, for the next fiscal in the spring, that we put that on like that.
So we're paying a year ahead. Okay.
Yes.
Councilwoman Pastor.
Is it possible to separate out, we vote for six months, and then separate out and see, I don't know if any of our council, we, we can continue to do it the way, way it's set because of the, of the way that it happens, but I, I don't know. I, I will tell you from my point of view, I was one that voted, I think all of us did, but, voted to be removed from the league. We were having some challenges then. My main concern and purpose was because I was in the fight regarding the first responders and cancer screenings and all the things that come along with it, and the presumptive pieces in the law. And I didn't feel like the league was being strong enough and supporting not only the city of Phoenix, but now really supporting the state across as, as we go from small towns and rules and everywhere, we're seeing a bigger and bigger increase. So that was my reasoning for stepping out. Yesterday at my committee meeting, I asked, asked you to present on the league, and I asked, in particular, why is it that important? Because as Councilman Nowakowski said, we, we did really well. We worked the way we, we did. We tack teamed, we had to tack team. It required more force, I guess, in the sense of the three of you, and trying, or really, the three, but really one, and trying to pull the team together and really push, in particular, in my neighborhood was the short-term rentals and all that dynamic was going on. And how do we pull in all the neighborhoods? And it just, it took a lot, but, but we got there. I had an eye-opening situation yesterday, in the sense at the committee meeting, that the league is not just about Wayfair and other items. We are also, it's part of our finances and our taxes and all these other areas that we use the league for that I didn't know other departments were a part of. And so, to me, that was very eye-opening and I have a clear understanding of how the league works throughout our whole system. So could you please explain that?
Mayor, Councilmember Pastor, Yessenya Doe from our government, State Relations Manager will actually cover some of those topics for us.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor. Yes, so as we discussed yesterday in the subcommittee, one of the areas that the league does a lot of work in is related to the finance department and from a financial perspective, they regularly convene meetings to discuss policy discussions that are going to be taking place at the Municipal Tax Code Commission. And as we discussed, this commission is the commission in charge of adopting and making any changes to the model city tax code. And these changes are then adopted by all 91 cities and towns, regardless of whether we are a member or not. And so from that perspective, it's very important, it's critical, that from a finance department, we are at the table early on in these discussions to be able to resolve any issues prior to them being brought forward to the Municipal Tax Code Commission. And so, so based on that conversation, what the league does, they provide a forum for the different departments, for all different cities, to get together and, and discuss these potential changes and be able to resolve conflicts prior to bringing them forward to the commission. We also talked about how the league provides professional development opportunities through the staffing of various associations, whether it be for finance, the law department, clerk, through their conferences and various meetings that they hold throughout the year.
So, so I guess what I have to say is, I was on the same page at a certain point with Councilman Nowakowski in the sense that I thought we did a really good job in, in, in the force that we had. What I also was able to see and witness is that, oh, we have more items coming our way, and the force may not be that strong due to the fact of our team. And we need other arms, or I would say tentacles, out there to start helping. But also, we're a major city that needs to play in a way that, how it affects a big city, we also are one of the, the strongest members of the league to also help our rural communities in getting some resources, and we partner well with them. And so, it's bigger than just a city. It's including cities and towns, which if you think of Globe, Miami, Superior, all the mining areas, Hayden, Hank, all the areas that I'm thinking of, Marana, those are areas that need help. And so, it's bigger than just us being able to do the great work that we do, but also being able to make change throughout our state and, and work with all the cities and towns. So I really appreciate this coming back. I also really appreciate that the league wrote a letter regarding the cancer and how they're supportive of it. So I will support this item. Thank you.
Thank you. I am planning to support this item. I was not a member of this body when we departed from the league, and I think it is important partnership for us. The league works with us on a variety of issues, including public safety. Phoenix plays an important role in both regional and statewide efforts on things like 911, and it's valuable from my perspective that we be at the table for those discussions. I also want our data to be included when the league calculates financial impacts of different tax policies. I believe it's important, particularly as we modernize the tax code, to look at everything from data centers to goods that used to be delivered physically but are now often digitally delivered. How do we make sure as the legislature adapts the tax code, they understand the implications? As policymakers, we rely on good data, and so does the legislature. Phoenix should be as involved as possible in those decisions and make sure that all of us understand what is happening so we can manage our budget. But our legislators as well should get great data. So I, I think we need to continue to be part of the league, and I'm going to support this motion. Any additional comments?
Roll call.
DeCecio.
No.
Garcia.
Yes.
Nowakowski.
No.
Pastor.
Yes.
Stark.
Yes.
Waring.
Yes.
Guardado.
Yes.
Gallego.
Yes. Passes 6 to 3. I was asked to clarify that item number 63 was withdrawn. That was an item related to a mortuary on Broadway, so that will not be moving forward at this council meeting. And if you were here on that item, you do not need to stay any longer. We will next move to item 28, the Latino Cultural Center. Councilman Nowakowski has been working on this for quite a while, and I will turn to the councilmen for comments and perhaps a motion.
Well, Mayor, first of all, I just want to thank all the support from my colleagues and especially the community at large. Forty percent of the population, according to last census, is Hispanic within our Phoenix area. I believe in the next census, it'd be closer to 50%. And one of the things that you benefit of having a Latino Cultural Center is learning about the Latino community, their trans traditions. And at the same time, myself, is, I'm a fine example. My father's Polish, and my mother's Mexican. And being brought up in two different cultures, you see how much we have in common. And I believe it's through the arts and it's through culture that we bring that unity among the different cultures and races to realize that we all are the same. And I believe that's one of the things that this cultural center is going to bring to the city of Phoenix, is bringing people together to learn how we're all really one human being, one, one, one person in, in this great city of ours. So with that, I'd like to approve, make a motion to approve staff's recommendation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We have one card in favor from Ehrlinda Torres. If you would like to come down, you have two minutes to address the council.
Thank you. I feel privileged to be in front of you once again. It's been a long road with the Latino Cultural Center, and it's very simple. For our community, first, I want to congratulate and thank you as servant leaders and public servants for investing in the cultural centers that we have today. You have the Irish Cultural Center, you have Japanese, and they have been very successful. It's time now that we invest and stand up and show the nation, as such a large city, that we're ready to put our Latino Cultural Center together. Certainly, I agree that ideally, if we've just had more and more billions of dollars, but today, our children need a place to be. And you know, as I do, that, who's having children in this nation today? Latinos, Chicanos, Indigenous. And now we have the opportunity to be inclusive and bring them all together. I thank you for your time, and I guess the final comment is, that location was found with the due diligence of an exceptional staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Pastor.
I would like to have staff. The motion, that, how I understand it, and I need to get clarity on it, and that's why I pulled it for comments, is that, and this is where I'm very confused about this, is that the vote was the Latino Cultural Center at the North Building in Margaret T. Hans Park, or another site to be determined, and to conduct a request for proposal to select a capital campaign consultant to assist in the financial planning of the Latino Cultural Center. That's... That's, is that the, I don't know what the motion is. Okay.
Thank you. Uh, Mayor, Councilwoman Pastore, that is the recommendation in the council packet. That is the subcommittee recommendation.
So, um, my question is that, uh, you have identified the North Building. However, it says, "or another site to be determined." How is that process going to go about?
Mayor Gallego, Councilwoman Pastore, if it is approved, the Latino Cultural Center ad hoc committee will have to create a process, a timeline to look at other sites while continuing assessments of the North Building to be able to bring, uh, what is, uh, comes out of that architectural assessment per se with the North Building and other sites that we may find with our partner departments to bring to the ad hoc committee for their discussion to potentially then bring back to this body for approval.
Okay. And so what I heard from you, there's going to be assessments on the North Building. Well, if we find a, well, I guess where I'm going to go there, number one, is what would the cost of that assessment be? Number two, if we're looking at other sites and we find another site, how much money would we have spent doing assessment on the North Building? And now we're going to have to start a new assessment on a new site? And where is this money coming from?
So, Mayor Gallego, Councilwoman Pastore, the funding for the assessment would come from the bond funds that are held for the Latino Cultural Center, uh, for us to be able to look at that, uh, building and see, uh, what the structure is. The building official through planning and development has done an initial assessment. This would just give us a better idea of costs and what the building, where it stands architecturally as it's been vacant for decades. So that assessment would come out of this bond funding.
Mayor, maybe I can help out with that.
Councilman.
So Mayor, first of all, I just want to thank Mitch, our new, um, arts and culture director. He's able to organize two trips for, um, some of the council members and some of our staff to visit some of the Latino cultural centers throughout the Southwest. And one of the things that we noticed was that some of the cultural centers actually, when they're out there doing their campaign, asking or doing their fundraising, sometimes there's in-kind donations like properties. So we're not really sure that maybe in the future, somebody might turn around and say, "We have 14 acres of land that we'd like to donate to you." So it's just really leaving our options open for those entrepreneurs and those, um, individuals that are fundraising, or if there's another opportunity that happens to come along that we're not just, um, nailed down to one, one building. So, um, that's, that's a little bit of information that I wanted to share.
Councilmember Garcia.
Yeah. So I think I was the one that brought this up in the subcommittee. I think because we waited such a long time, I do think we deserve another look at having a brand-new site. Like you talked about New Mexico, you talked about Dallas and other places. Um, I think we can look into places. I know there's already been some research done, but what I didn't want to do is close out the ability to find something else that allows us to have a new building, a new build designed, uh, for the needs of, of this culture center. Um, apart from that, my interest is also that we're able to grow. I feel like the Hans, uh, location kind of doesn't allow us to grow from there. Um, and it also doesn't hold cultural significance specifically to the Latino-Chicano community, uh, from Phoenix. And so my interest in, in having pushed for this in the subcommittee was to continue to look for other sites, hopefully something that's more culturally relevant to, to our communities and also something that allows us to expand and have a brand-new build.
Vice Mayor.
I think part of, and another reason why we've decided to take on, on this route is that we just don't, want to continue to give the impression that we're going to be, continue to stall on this project or that we're not moving forward with the project or that we're not serious about the project, but also at the same time trying to keep, trying to keep our, our options open on, on things that can actually develop. Um, and I think that's, that's really important. Um, I know that there's people that have been working on this for many, many, many years. Um, and I think we have a huge commitment to try to like, continue to move the ball forward and continue moving forward with the Latino Cultural Center as we're looking for, for different options, but also trying to do it in, in the most responsible and economic way, um, that we can.
Councilwoman Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. I made the motion at the subcommittee and I, I did so because for 17 years, we've been pursuing this. And I don't know how many thousands of hours that have been spent on it. And this last committee was very thorough. And I know not everyone is happy with this building, but as you stated, doing this review and analysis of the building and the project, if, if it's truly going to be suitable, um, I wanted us to keep moving forward. However, I fully acknowledge that this isn't the ideal place. I would love to see us have a big campus and, uh, in Albuquerque. That's fantastic. But that's also probably 20, $25 million. And you can't stretch, what is it, $6 million that far? Is all we have in the bank? So I'm saying, go ahead and proceed forward. If by chance, this doesn't prove to be, uh, available, then we will have to continue to search. But we can continue while you're doing this process to look for someone who's very generous that has some land that would like to donate or a few million dollars that would like to donate to a much bigger campus. Nothing wrong with that. And in fact, would not be anything wrong with having two. You could, I mean, there's enough history here to provide for two and for activities. So that's the reason I move this forward. I feel very strongly, we need to go forward. Seventeen years, we haven't come up with an answer and this is the closest we've been. So I would like to see us keep moving forward on this. If it all falls apart, then we have to go to Plan B and find that very wealthy person who really believes in the project and is willing to donate land and money. But please don't stop.
Uh, Mayor?
Uh, Councilman DeCiccio.
Uh, I'd like to echo too with Councilwoman Williams and both, uh, Nowakowski, Councilman Nowakowski said here. I mean, we've been at this now for 17-plus years and we still have gone nowhere because every time we turn around, there's just a change. And I think the plan, or at least the ideas that Councilwoman Williams just brought forward is like, like, hey, let's proceed with option A, but if anywhere in this process we find something better, we're able to move. If we don't at least move this item forward, the odds of this happening, we could be another 17 years here. And the fact of the matter is, we're 40, you know, 40%, and I think it's actually more than that, is Hispanic in our community. I don't know if this is, you know, if this is where the majority of the Spanish should be at or where, where these cultural centers should be. I, that's not mine. It's something that Councilman Nowakowski has been working on for years. And I just give you at least from my perspective, uh, when an individual works this hard and has put this much effort in and has basically put in their, their amount of blood and sweat and tears and the whole thing into trying to get something to move forward, it's very difficult to restart this. And I'm just giving a warning, at least to some of my other council members, I get the, the discussion on that, I really do. But if we don't move something forward today, it just isn't going to happen. And not that it's not going to happen, it just, it just puts a whole nother switch in this thing. But you can work two tracks. You don't have to head on one path. You never have to do that on anything that we do. You head on this path here, but at the same time, you can always switch gears and be able to move into another path if something else comes forward. I think at the very least, that's kind of what Councilwoman Williams was talking about here, is that if you find something that makes it work, then let's do it. But it's going to require others to do the work too. You can't, we can't rely on Michael basically carrying the load on this thing like he's been doing. It really requires a really strong teamwork. I'm not Hispanic, but I do understand the need for that and the need for us to have a cultural center and for us to be able to acknowledge the work and the commitment and especially the fact that the city of Phoenix would not be who it is today if it wasn't for the Hispanic community. I mean, that is who we are. So I'm going to be strongly supportive of this and, because I've seen this happen and I just feel horrible if this thing fails. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. We received an additional card from a citizen requesting to speak, Jeffrey Furness. Ferns?
Mayor Gallego and councilmembers, thank you. I was running a little late. Um, I'm here, uh, as a Latino, as a Phoenician, as an advocate and working professional in the arts and culture sector for 25 years. I'm, have been following this process for, um, I think the eight years that I've been back in Arizona and I want to, uh, share my experience in 25 years of arts and culture, the purpose of a cultural center and the importance of a cultural center. Purpose, main purpose of a cultural center is to work within a community, whatever that culture is, to help them share, learn, educate and tell their stories first voice. First voice is me telling my story as a Latino, as an LGBTQ person, as a native of Arizona. So that's the first purpose. Second purpose of a good cultural center is to bridge communities. If to help share our narrative out there to the media, to the communities at large. And, um, on a side note, I was a resident of Portland on the park, just moved out of there about a year ago. So Hans Park for me, I looked out my balcony, I saw the Irish Cultural Center, the Friendship Garden, the Burton Bar, the Plotnik, uh, Jewish Heritage Site and the Phoenix Center for the Arts. As the landscape started to change downtown, I started to see the faces also change. What's important, if you go to the National Mall in DC and you look at the Smithsonian Institutes, you can go from the, uh, walking distance to all these different museums that help share the story of the American experience, inclusive of communities of color. Why I think it's important that this site be there is because as we continue to change and Hans Park continues to change, we as Latinos have a space there where our culture, our languages, our performances, we can educate, share and tell first voice and then we can share with the wider community. Twenty-two million visitors come to, uh, metropolitan Phoenix a year. If we have the opportunity in a space like Hans Park to intersect with all these other centers, we will have, in essence, a mini mall to share the native Phoenix experience. And I'm talking native as in people that, uh, share common good, common space and, uh, common goals. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any additional, Councilwoman Pastore?
So, uh, some of you probably don't know the background, my background. Uh, you know that I was a teacher, but I was also, uh, worked for the Office of Culture and Language in Chicago Public Schools. I was the director of what we called Museums in the Park. And Museums in the Park incorporated the nine wonderful museums that sat in Chicago Park land. I worked, well, at the time was the Mexican-American or Mexican Cultural Center very closely and I agree with you. It's about bridging and it's about bringing people together and it's about, uh, telling our story. But it's also about where it's located. It's located in Pilsen. It's located in the Hispanic, uh, or Latino neighborhood. It is located and it forces and brings cultures together from the central core of that city to the south side of their area to discuss and to bring culture alive and together. So what I'm saying is, is that that piece in this process is very important to me. And that building is what's important to me in creating that atmosphere. I, along with everybody else, agree that we need to move this forward, agree that it's been 17 years. But the issue is, it really hasn't been 17 years in the sense that depending on who was committed to building that Latino Cultural Center, all depended on who sat here. So if we look at history and we look at those who were, have been sitting here, they've could have moved this agenda forward. But now you have four Latinos sitting here saying, "We need a Latino Cultural Center" and we have the ability to move it forward. My dynamic is making sure that's the destination place. And that's a place where we attract people internationally to go to that area. We're building a billion-dollar light rail that really a cultural center should be in that heart of that community. To be able to use that piece, that rail, to move people back and forth and connect the North and the South together and build our history in that. So what I'm not, I, I, I just don't, I don't think, uh, we're not saying moving it forward. We're saying, do the due diligence to look at other spaces and don't spend, I'm saying, don't spend all the money if we have another space and we don't have the money. Because my understanding, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that $6 million tied to the North Building can move from the North Building to another, like, to the Latino Cultural Center. I need an answer, so.
Mayor, Councilwoman Pastore and councilmembers, there are two pots of funds related to this. One is currently about $900,000 tied to a Latino Cultural Center, um, from the, from the 2006 bond program and that's applicable to a Latino Cultural Center anywhere in the city. And it, as Mitch said, that would be used to do the work on feasibility. There's a second, uh, pot of funds that is about $6 million tied to the Phoenix community, the, the Phoenix North, Phoenix Center North Building, which is that building. That, those funds have actually been put into, uh, abeyance by the council when, uh, we went into the downturn. So the authorization is there, although the money is not. It would have to be, uh, it would have to be pulled back in from any available bond funds that remained from 2006. But ultimately, the council does have the authority to use that money, uh, as they would see fit in an, in a similar area in the Park's cultural facilities area. So it's a long answer, but to be very specific, there is money-
Well, does it, we could designate money, yes.
-that the council can designate. We would have to identify it because it, it, it has not been, um, authorized, uh, it into existence yet, but it, I mean, it is authorized, but it has not been, the bonds have not been sold.
Thank you.
And Mayor?
Councilman Nowakowski.
Just for the record, I was elected back in 2007 and that's when this process really went into high speed. We basically created a incubator, which is ADLAC, and we brought all the Hispanic and Latino artists together to really fundraise and to create a space in downtown Phoenix. After that, we, um, went to our city manager and we asked if we can hire a consultant. The consultant came in, we did all kinds of town halls throughout many districts, especially in the Hispanic, largely Hispanic populations. And sure enough, all the districts wanted to have the Hispanic Cultural Center or Latino Cultural Center in their districts. And out of the meetings that came out was South Phoenix wanted one, Maryville wanted one, um, the Levine area wanted one, um, the Sacred Heart area wanted one, Mary Rose wanted one for Grant Park. So everyone wanted to have the center. There was a lot of excitement. But then what came out of the consultant after working it all out is that the old neighborhoods change, that downtown Phoenix before the, um, I-10 was actually coming through the, where we have Margaret Hans Park now, was a Hispanic community. And that basically, um, there was a lot of history that was lost and that the Hispanic community continues to grow. And at one time, South Phoenix was basically a very Hispanic area and now it's moving out towards the Maryville area and now still moving towards the north sunny slope area. So as we continue to grow as a population, so does the needs for more arts and culture and all kinds of activities and all kinds of amendments for all people. So the decision was made that it was important to have something in the downtown area. It wasn't just Margaret Hans Park, it was just something in the downtown area that could be shared by all communities and then we took away the territorial aspect of it. So that's why, um, they narrowed it down, this committee that we chose. We had one representative from each council district to make sure that there was a, a strong-arming for one council member or another, that was all equal. And we chose, and they, they came up with the decision of Margaret Hans Park. Um, one of the, all the- One of the, all the reasons was, they said that it should be something where we can celebrate cultures on the outside also. So with the $80 million revitalization or revenue, that we're going to renew the Margaret Hans Park and create an amphitheater and space for childrens and families and all that, that this would be a part of that growth also. So that's just a little bit of the history. So I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't just last year where this thought came up. It happened to be, at that time, Mayor Thelda Williams said, "Enough is enough. Let's just make, let's just get a committee together and make it happen." And now with the leadership of our Mayor Gallegos, it looks like it's going to happen. So I'd just like to thank all my colleagues for their support. And if there is another opportunity that comes, absolutely, we should look at it and take advantage of it. Thank you all.
Thank you. Roll call. DeCecio?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Nowakowski?
Yes.
Pastore?
Yes.
Stark? Waring? Williams? Guardado?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
Wow, Waring. I'm impressed.
We next move to item 35, which from my perspective is a good news agenda item. It is authorization to enter into an agreement with La Frontera Impact Suicide Prevention Center. We have been working very hard on public safety to make sure that we equip our first responders with the resources they need, but also make sure they have the partners when it would, when issues would be better addressed through partnerships and that we do not ask our police and firefighters to do all of the work on the mental and behavioral health side. We are working very hard to modernize and make sure we have the right partnerships. This complements work we are already doing with Frontera, who are providing mental health first aid training to our police officers so that they have the training and better knowledge about what they may see in the field. Behavioral health is becoming an increasingly large portion of the calls we get at 911 at the City of Phoenix. So very excited that this item will be moving forward. Vice Mayor, do we have a motion?
Yes, I have a motion to approve item 35.
Second.
Any additional comments? Councilwoman Stark?
Mayor, I just wanted to thank you for championing this issue. I know this is one of the most important issues as you were running for mayor, and I'm glad to see it come to fruition. Thank you for your hard work.
Certainly, particularly, our police department has done the hard work on this one, but we ought to celebrate when we have good news. Roll call. DeCecio?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Nowakowski?
Yes, and thank you, Kate.
Pastore?
Yes.
Stark? Waring? Williams?
Yes.
Guardado?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes. Passes unanimously. We're on a streak today.
We next move to item 60, which is in Councilwoman Pastore's district. We have one, we have three cards, all in favor, one wishing to speak. Councilwoman, would you like to hear a presentation or start with the cards?
Start with the cards.
Excellent.
It's easier that way.
We have Dr. Cannon, Willow President, here.
Mayor, Council, thank you so much. My name is Dr. Robert Cannon, president of Willow Neighborhood Association, Phoenix's largest neighborhood association. We'd like to officially go on record in general support of this project. We have some elements of the design that we're working on in a collaborative process, including billboards, illumination, and the traffic issues surrounding the area. We also look forward to the stakeholders, which are the City of Phoenix, the council, the mayor, the developers, and our mutual collaboration effort to support the Willow Conservation Plan. And we look forward to the successful completion of this project. We stand in favor. Thank you.
Thank you. And we have two other neighborhood leaders here who are available to speak if requested in support. Councilwoman, do we have a motion?
I move item 60. Second.
Motion and a second. This is redevelopment of an important and exciting corridor. So excited about this moving forward. Roll call.
Oh. Go ahead.
DeCecio?
Yes.
Garcia? Nowakowski?
Yes.
Pastore?
Yes, I have some comments. And my comments are regarding the billboard. And that the billboard stays within our, we're in the process right now of looking at billboards and looking at the Calvins, the, I can't remember the other one, the Calvins, the dimming, and also when they will turn off at night. So, Ellen, I'm looking at you.
Mayor, Councilwoman Pastore, members of council, that is correct. There are three billboards on the site today that have a perpetual easement that must be moved to allow for redevelopment. As such, Clear Channel is the owner of those boards. They've been working with the Peterson Group on how to relocate them as part of accompanying the redevelopment of the site. In order to make that happen, they need separate use permit hearings through the zoning adjustment process and some variances to make that happen. As part of that separate hearing process, ultimately, the Board of Adjustment can impose stipulations as it relates to NITS, which is the measure of light for billboards, hours of operation, those types of, as well as size, those types of regulations as part of the billboard. I believe that will come to the zoning adjustment hearing officer in January. But is irrespective of the zoning approval, that will have to go forward to allow the billboards.
Okay. I just wanted to put that on record. And then the other piece is, this is actually very exciting for District Four. Central and Thomas is a key area. As some of you know, further up, Park Central is there. So this will be a game changer on Central and Thomas. And other projects are moving on Central, and so I'm excited that this is now happening and moving forward. I'm excited that the neighborhoods work together, as they always do, as Willow always does. There are a great association on how they work dynamics that affect the neighborhood, but then get to the, get to the middle. So really appreciate all the work that has been done by the developer and also by the neighborhood and staff in order to get to where we are today. So, thank you. I'm a yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes, and I think we are making a recommendation with the ordinance as well, correct? Okay. You knew I would ask.
Everything that is written on page 162.
Waring? Williams?
Yes.
Guardado?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
Item passes unanimously.
Woo-hoo!
Item 62 is in Councilmember Garcia's district.
Yep. So for item 62, on a motion to withdraw item 62 from the agenda and re-advertise for public hearing before the City Council on January 8th.
I'll second that.
So we have, so we have a card for Nick, I'm sorry, Lo, LaLadi?
Labadi.
Labadi. Sorry, I'm sorry.
Thank you. No problem. It's a tricky one. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Nick Labadi, 7144 East Stetson Drive in Scottsdale with Rose Law Group, here on behalf of Divinity Homes and Ashland Communities. Mike Hare is with me here today. So we found out about this just a little under an hour ago and are still a little confused as to why we're moving it. We performed all of the required notification. I think staff can attest to that. We held a neighborhood meeting that nobody attended. We had a recommendation of approval from the Village Planning Committee, which we're very grateful for. That nobody was in opposition. We did have some community members there that we spoke to and gave our information and hoped to continue that. Then at Planning and Zoning Commission, we received a unanimous approval. Nobody was in opposition at that time either, and we did speak to our neighbor at that hearing and have not heard any issues since then. We, so that makes, I think, five public, at least five opportunities for the public to engage. We haven't heard anything negative. We have heard some positive feedback. We have heard from a neighborhood organization that we worked with. I think they'd also been working with staff. We incorporated their comments into the site plan. We've made a lot of changes to that. I think we've gone through half a dozen iterations. And so I guess today, what we'd like to know is what issues there are to work on between, if we needed to work on them, what are they, and I'm not sure whose issues they are.
So I will bring it back to Councilmember Garcia.
Yeah. So I was, I happened to be at the Village Planning Committee for this one and recognized that there was no community involvement. And I've had a couple of calls and conversations, particularly with the mosque that's next door. And so that's why the, this, the reason I want to do this is to make sure we can all sit down and make sure that everyone's on the same page. And by January 8th, we could come together and make sure it happens. And so it's not being denied. It's just pushing it back to January 8th.
And is, were any issues expressed, if I may ask, that we can work on between now and then? Or, it seems, it seems a bit last minute, and we felt that we had done a lot and worked with the community significantly. And I guess if there was more to work on, you know, I guess I just don't know what that would be.
Yes, we will reach back out to you and make sure that we sit down with the neighbors and yourselves and get together and make sure that we could come, get on the same page.
Okay. I don't know if there's any neighbors here, but I'm happy to talk to anybody after. I don't know if they came or not, or if they indicated they would be, but I don't, I'm not seeing any hands.
Council, Councilwoman?
Just for history, there's a lot of work that has gone on in that area. Since I used to work at South Mountain Community College and was part of the plans that were developed for that area, I, my suggestion to you is you reach out to those neighbors that were part of that and understand what, the reason and the purpose of what that area was set forth for planning in the future. So those are some, just some suggestions. The councilman has asked to continue it to January 8th, and I would, another suggestion would honor that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I would, I would just like to echo what everyone has said. I think community input is incredibly important. Our constituents are the ones that live in these neighborhoods day in and day out. And I think it's really important to making sure that as we continue with these decisions and we continue with these votes, we make sure that we feel confident and good that we've done everything that we can to get community input. And I also support that we move this item to January and making sure that we, that everyone feels good about the decisions that are being made.
Thank you, Vice Mayor.
And so we have a motion to withdraw on the table, is that right? And a second for withdrawal. So it's not a motion to continue to January, it's a motion to withdraw.
It's a motion to withdraw and re-advertise and prove for January 8th. Do you want me to reread the motion? I know you stepped out.
I would be grateful if you could reread it or our planning director could.
Mayor, members of council, Councilman Garcia's motion is to withdraw it from the agenda, allow for re-advertising for a public hearing on January 8th. It was not appealed, so it's not on the council for a public hearing. So if you just continue it to the 8th, you won't be able to make any changes to stipulations or have a public hearing. It would be a straight up or down vote. But because he identified that he wants to have some meeting with the neighbors, we want to make sure that the council can have a public hearing and make changes. That's why it's a withdraw and re-advertise.
Perfect. That was very helpful. Thank you. Are we ready for, and this is a voice vote. So all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. We will see you next year. I haven't said that yet. Item number 63 has been withdrawn, so we move to item number 64. We have a card from the applicant's representative available to speak if necessary. Item number 64 is in Councilman DeCecio's district. Vice Mayor or Councilman, do we have a motion?
Yeah, we have a motion to approve item 64.
I will recommend, I'll second that, as long as the approval's based on the Planning Commission's approval and adopt the related resolution.
Second.
Mayor, members of council, I believe this is a general plan amendment, so you have to have a public hearing pursuant to state law. So you gavel open the public hearing and close it, I think will be good. There's no issues with this particular case.
We have no card, no yellow cards, so we will close the public hearing. Do we need to do a motion again, or the motion is?
I mean, let's go ahead and do another motion again, just to be safe for the record.
I'd like to make a motion to approve per Planning Commission recommendation and adopt the related resolution.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any council member comments? Roll call. DeCecio?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Nowakowski?
Yes.
Pastore?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring? Williams?
Yes.
Guardado?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes. Passes unanimously.
We next move to the companion item, item number 65. We will open the public hearing. We also have one card available to speak from the applicant's representative. There are no council member questions. I will close the public hearing. I don't, do we have a motion on item 65?
Yes, we have a motion to approve per Planning Commission recommendation and adopt the related ordinance.
Second.
Second.
Roll call. DeCecio?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Nowakowski?
Yes.
Pastore?
Yes.
Stark? Waring? Williams?
Yes.
Guardado?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
That passes unanimously. We next move to item 66, which is the northeast corner of Central Avenue and Glendale Avenue. Do we have a motion?
I believe you have to open the hearing up, but I'll be happy to make a motion after.
All right. We will open the public hearing. We have seven cards in favor and four opposed. Shall we begin?
I can make the motion now. I think-
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay. So I'm going to make a motion, explain why. So I'm going to recommend that we approve the historic preservation overlay per the staff recommendation and adopt the related ordinance. As a planner, the threat of Prop 207 claims have long loomed over my head, and I'm sure some of the people at the city as well. It has times, at times, hampered the city's ability to assist neighborhoods in creating a special identity. I must, must, you must understand, I believe in private property rights. This case is actually placing a historic preservation overlay. Research shows that historic property designations increase the value of a property. Our particular HO, HP overlay delays demolition by one year and then allows the property owner to move forward. In this situation, we've seen offer, an offer that was put up for 1.3 million. And that a property owner, buyer would have, in fact, incorporated the HP designation onto the property. The city has also been willing to assist the owner with $120,000 in HP bond money. We've been shown an appraisal of the property that establishes a value of just a little less than 1.1 million. Furthermore, if the city designated the request for HP, this would allow them to seek a national historic designation. With that, one then can file for a reduction of property taxes by 50% for 15 years. I cannot justify that an approval of the HP overlay will diminish the value of the property and that the rights to sell the property are being taken away. Again, therefore, I recommend that we approve the historic preservation overlay per the staff recommendation and adopt the related ordinance.
Thank you, Councilwoman. We, yes, we need a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. We will begin the public hearing with testimony from America Young, and she will be followed by Mary Crozier.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Mayor Gallego and members-
Good afternoon, Mayor Gallego and members of the City Council. I have things written down that I wanted to say, but what the distinguished councilperson said just isn't true. We have not been allowed to put our property on the open market. We have been blocked by a very small but influential group that think that my property is historic, when in fact it is not. You have not been to see my property, it is only 1,600 square feet. Every architect, every contractor, any realtor that came has told us that that property, the house, is a detriment to the property value. So I don't know where you're getting your information from, but it's not firsthand information that we have gotten. We have been sick, my husband's been sick, so we have not been able to organize as well as we should have. But this, this last week, we spent talking to people on the Murphy Trail. Everybody is in, is in support of us and against property, somebody taking our property rights, our own personal property that I've had for 22 years, designating it something against my will. That just doesn't happen in this country. So I told you, we've had it seen, everybody says that the houses has to be demolished and the property, the value is in the property. I'm sorry that it's over 50 years old, but if you had been to see the house, as other people have, from the street, it looks amazing. You come inside that house and you will have a different opinion of it. Not because of neglect, but because it's a small, very bad planned house. And you are taking my, my prop, my property, telling me now, making it historic and opening it only to a very, very small group of people who are even interested in the, the preserving of it. We don't know what we could get for this property, because you, we have not been allowed to. Because of this intense pressure and us being maligned, we, people who have had interested, developers who did have interests are standing way back. They're not even approaching us. So as far as I'm concerned, we are being harassed. And you're taking, if you vote that way, taking our property rights away.
Thank you.
Twice your historic, your historic surveys have performed an architectural, had an architectural firm come to see the property and have denied it. They've denied it. And now all of a sudden, somebody's interested. Well, we're not gonna pay for somebody else's agenda. We're not gonna lose money for somebody else's agenda. Thank you.
Mayor, I have a question for, for you, ma'am.
Councilman Noakowski.
So were you informed about meetings about rezoning your area?
I'm sorry.
Were you invited to any meetings regarding the rezoning or the overlay?
This is the only meeting that I know of. We've been to, we went to one historic preservation meeting and we were called greedy, so.
Did you get a letter or a flyer or any information?
Well, my husband's, my, I'm sorry, my husband's in sick, so we have not been able to make meetings. Our attorney has gone to all of them.
But my question is, have you received any information through the mail or at your house about meetings regarding this overlay?
No, have we?
Thank you, sir, you know, you're, the individuals on television can't hear you. So basically, you all did receive notification of meetings and you were sick at the time and you weren't able to go. All right, thank you.
Any other questions?
I think that concludes the questions. Thank you for your testimony. Mary Crozier will be followed by William Fishbach.
Mayor Gallego and members of the City Council, my name is Mary Crozier, and I'm here as a resident and owner of a historically designated property and former chair of the North Central Avenue Special Planning District. I'm also here as someone who does respect private property rights and respects the history of our city. As city staff has indicated, the house in question very clearly meets the criteria as a historic structure. The property represents one of only a small handful of American Colonial Revival homes left in Phoenix. This home is worthy of preservation because it dovetails with what our neighborhood and its residents have worked hard for years to protect. Frankly, it's within the power of this council to protect this home. If this house doesn't qualify for historic overlay and protection, I have to ask, which home does? Let me offer some historical perspective. 20 years ago, our neighborhood lost a historic adobe home located two lots north of 7015 North Central Avenue. This home was also built by the McElroy's. Unfortunately, seven cookie cutter homes were built in its place. Many neighbors were sickened at the loss of this centennial monument to Phoenix's history. Nor was this the only historic home to fall by the wayside. Within a short period of time, we lost 12 very significant historic homes to development. These losses motivated scores of neighbors to start the legal process of creating the Special Planning District. After working with the city of Phoenix for three solid years, the intent of initiating the overlay was to stop the destruction of historic properties and preserve the neighborhood's character. Over 90% of the residents supported the Special Planning District overlay. Today, as a result of our committee's dedication and the addition of the SPD, North Central Avenue is the only historic streetscape in the entire state of Arizona. Finally, I'd like to add a personal point, I live in a historic home. I cannot tell you how frequently we are approached to sell our home. The historic designation has actually increased our property values. It is my hope and the hope of all those residents who participated in the legislative process of the Special Planning District, that you agree that the McElroy House is historic and you vote to support its preservation. We have very few such homes left in our city and precious little history left to honor. It is my hope that five years from now, when you drive by this property with your children or grandchildren, that you'll be able to point to this property with pride and say that you are instrumental in saving it for all Phoenicians. Thank you.
Thank you. Will will be followed by Ann Ender.
Good afternoon, members of the council and mayor. You know, you started the meeting today by administering the oath of office. And I took that oath before I became a member of the Camelback East Village Planning Commission. I took a similar oath before I became a United States Army officer. It's an oath to support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of Arizona. And both of those constitutions exalt private property rights as sacred. Enforcing this HP overlay on the Youngs is in derogation of those private property rights. The Youngs have paid property taxes on this property for the past 20 years. They've paid to maintain this property for the past 20 years, and they just want to sell it. They want to sell it because that's their right, the same right that everybody in this room has. But it's got a house on it, it's 70 years old, it's rickety, it's barely livable. And to make this house sellable, palatable to an actual buyer for market value, the house needs to be eligible for demolition. So the Youngs sought a demolition permit. And that's when the Historic Preservation Office interceded and started this process against the Youngs' will. I'll be very clear, approval of this item is going to result in a Prop 207 lawsuit from my firm and I. I have already served a notice of claim on the city. I will serve an amended notice of claim on the city after today's hearing. I respectfully disagree with Councilwoman Stark that historic designation increases our property value that runs contrary to basic laws of economics. I will also point out that Prop 207 allows for an award of attorney's fees. And I want to go back to something that Councilman Waring said earlier. How do you want to spend your money? You want to spend hundreds of thousands of dollars in just compensation and attorney's fees to preserve this property? Or would you rather spend it on streetlights, traffic signals, police officers, things that make this community safe? I would respectfully say to this council that a yes vote on this item is not only in derogation of private property rights, but it is also fiscally irresponsible. Subject to any questions from the council, I thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. Ann Ender will be followed by David Young. Is John Hathaway here? So Ann, our Ender was marked in favor, not wishing to speak. For those who are watching online, she let us know. So we'll have John Hathaway followed by David Young.
Mayor Gallego, members of the City Council, my name is John Hathaway. I live at 7, 125 East Maryland Avenue, which is about a half mile south of this property. My house is a 1920's vintage, 1,600 square foot, English cottage style revival. I've been approached, I get approached roughly once a month by a developer wanting to buy it. Their intent is to tear it down and to maximize lot coverage. That is the intent. Now, I heard that Mrs. Young explained that, that she can't sell the property. That is untrue. There is nothing that prevents you from selling a property at fair market value. What I understand is that they want to get more than fair market value. They are speculating on the opportunity to subdivide the lot and cram it full of houses. Now, I, I grew up in Alexandria, Virginia. Alexandria is very proud of its old town. Houses that date from the 17th and 18th century, I guess 18th century, mid 18th century. I, I was at the Alhambra Village Planning Committee and there was a member there that was from Boston. And he lamented the fact that, that when he came to, to Phoenix, there were very few historic properties. And for a person that came from Alexandria, for a person that came from Boston, that's true. But there's a reason there are very few historic properties. And that's because in the past, we were, we were unattentive. We, we lacked the oversight required to maintain and, and preserve that heritage. Phoenix does have history. It does have history worth maintaining and worth preserving. That's why we formed a Historic Preservation Office. If we are willing to, to throw that in, why not just disband that? Why not remove that historic designation from, from Encanto, from Palmcroft, from Willow? Why not just build big apartments? We're willing to do that in many, many cases, why are we willing to do it here? Thank you.
David will be followed by Roger Bervort.
With all due respect, Mr. Hathaway, you've, you've proceeded to give the misinformation that's been going around. We have no desire to subdivide the property or do anything else with the property except sell it. The whole process was to sell it. We're sick, we're old, and we need to get rid of it. So our children are not stuck with this very argument and with council meetings and commission meetings. So our children can take, take the results of the sale to, for their use, and that is the reason we're selling it. We do not need to spend the 15,000, $20,000 a year that, that it takes to maintain this property. And we will, and we have not been able, we have not been able to make the improvements that the property needs. We cannot sell this house at a profit. This house needs extensive restoration or demolition. This house deteriorates the property. It is the property, the 1.3 acres that it is on, that has the value on North Central. I understand the people want to preserve it, but they have contributed nothing to us to, to make up for the difference. The amount that this property is worth is the amount of the check that we put in the bank. The estimations that you have heard about were estimations that were made, including the property, based on comps, and you cannot comp this property. It is not comparable. You cannot see what it is. There is a quarter acre lot just up the block from us that is being offered at $650,000. You do the math, we have 1.3 million, we have 1.3 acres. 6.5, $650,000 for a quarter acre lot. Multiply that by 1.3 acres and maybe you can get some idea of what we're talking about. We don't want the house torn down, but we want to sell the property at the best price we can get. Do you want to sell your property at a 50% loss? You're welcome to do it, we don't want to do that. I will tell you this, and I want to make this very clear. The majority of people that you will do this to do not have the wherewithal to fight you and take you to the court. We do, we have the wherewithal to take you all the way to the Supreme Court, and we will. We don't want the fight, we don't want to argue with you, we don't want to pay lawyers, we don't want to have any fight at all. We want to sell our house at fair market value. If you do what you're, what it seems like you want to do, you will block our ability to put the, to sell it to anybody who wants to come and make us an offer. Only the people who want to preserve this house will be able to make offers on it. We have had people come and look at the house who want to preserve it, and they walk away shaking their head. As a result, the one offer we have, which incidentally did not come with any earnest money, so we don't know how valid the offer would be, is for $1.3 million. But in our estimation, that is below what we can get for the lot without the house. We were not going to demolish the house, we were going to offer the demolition permit to whoever wanted to buy it and let them use it however they want. We want to sell the house at fair market value. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Roger will be followed by Rick Dellus.
Good afternoon, my name is Roger Bervort. I live at 634 East Cuyahoga, Arizona. And I've been involved in Phoenix, in historic preservation in Phoenix for nigh on 35 years, prior to the origins of the City of Phoenix Preservation Program. So I've been around the block a little bit. I'm also a realtor, and I understand the, the relationship of historic properties and, and historic preservation. I think the issue before you today really is, is this property eligible for designation on the Phoenix Historic Property Register as an example of the American Colonial Revival style and a fairly rare example of that style in Phoenix? And certainly in North Central, which is the area that we're talking about? That's the, that's the question. And I think that was quite articulately answered by staff at the Planning Commission hearing a few weeks ago, at which I spoke as well. So I think there's no question that the property is eligible for listing on the Phoenix Historic Property Register, and we should support that. I also represent a group called Preserve Phoenix, which is an active advocacy group for supporting historic preservation that stands behind this designation request and should, should that move forward. We've heard a lot today about other issues, property values, sale. I did check MLS in the last few minutes, the property is actively listed. It could be, it could be purchased, it could be sold by anybody, it's not limited, it's on the open market. I think the thing that we need to realize about historic preservation that has been very clearly proven in Phoenix over the last 30 years is that historic designation enhances property values. It enhances whether we're talking about a single family house or a historic neighborhood. We have seen a dramatic increase in property values in the neighborhoods over time. And historic properties are sought after by those who wish to do rehab or those who wish to do expansion within the guidelines of the Historic Preservation Office. You're not held back by what you can do, other than by the guidelines which have been promulgated and manifested and reviewed by this body many times. So I hope that you will, I'd like to support your designate, move to designate this property on the Phoenix Property Register and professionally say that it does add value in the long run. Thank you.
Rick will be followed by Scott Martin.
Hi, Mayor and Council. I reside directly and adjacent north to the property that, that America owns at 7031 North Central. Everything that's old isn't historic, and I think people have lost their perspective on this issue. This home, I've been in this home several times, it is functionally obsolete. I don't know how, who would buy this home and want to think they could live in it. There's nothing you can do to make this home modern. There's nothing you can do to make this home modern. The North Central Phoenix Homeowners Association and this historic group, I think, are a bunch of good well-doers, but they're interlopers. When I came in here, I heard in the Pledge of Allegiance, it said at the very end, "And liberty and justice for all." Where is the justice and where is the liberty for the owners of this home? They should be able to do with it what they want. We welcome whatever happens in that neighborhood. The house looks nice on the street, but I would encourage you to look on the inside and see if you would live there, because you wouldn't. And 1.3 acres, some gentleman mentioned that they're talking about putting apartment buildings in there. That's a misrepresentation of the facts. Nobody's going to build an apartment building on 1.3 acres. So just remember, liberty and justice for all applies to the owners of this property. Thank you.
Next up is Scott, followed by Dan Clocky. Thank you. Scott does not need to speak, but is in support of the agenda item. Dan Clocky is next.
Thank you, mayor, members of the council. My name is Dan Clocky, and I serve as the Chair of the Historic Preservation Commission. I wanted to talk briefly about the vote that the commission took a few weeks back on the McElroy House. You appointed us, obviously, to be stewards of our cultural and historic assets here in the city of Phoenix. And many of the votes that we take as a commission on these hard cases are actually fairly split. This one was not, and I think there's a reason for that. I deeply respect the position that our vote puts you all in, and I understand how difficult that can be and how conflicted it can be thinking about these things, and the potential consequences, obviously, has been aired here today. But I think there are moments when it's worth taking that vote, and I think this is one of them. So I'd ask you to really consider and ponder it the way that the commission did, and vote yes for this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. We have six cards from individuals who do not wish to speak but are opposed to this item, and we have 10 cards from individuals who do not wish to speak but are in favor of this item. I believe that is all the cards I have wishing to speak. Councilmember comment? We have one additional? And if you could please state your name.
Hi, mayor. Eric Jensen. I filled out a card that said, "If needed to speak." I have the offer here. I represent the interested party that wanted to purchase and made the initial offer. To Mr. Young's point, it's a standard Arizona contract. You guys have probably all seen it, on line 11, which is highlighted. I'm happy to share this with you. It shares earnest money of $10,000. So, and they do, just so you know as well, my clients had plans. They spoke with the HP to make sure that everything that they wanted to do would be within the rules, and everything was approved. So it is possible to restore this house to a modern home.
Wonderful. Thank you for your testimony. Councilmember comments? Councilwoman Pastor.
Joe, I would like to know, could you please define what an HP overlay is?
So, the way we, I'm sorry. Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, the way we designate properties on the Phoenix Historic Property Register is through overlay zoning. It doesn't change the underlying zoning, which in this case is R110, but it places an overlay on the property that would make it subject to Chapter 8 of the zoning ordinance, which sets up for designated properties a review process for demolitions and also exterior changes to the property.
Okay. Because what I'm hearing is, what I heard from a gentleman was, the exterior looks great, but the internal, the inside is, the inside, it doesn't function correctly. My understanding, because I live in a historic home, I am allowed, the exterior is allowed to remain, as long as the exterior remains and it represents that historic area, I can, inside, interior, in the interior, I can do whatever I want. I can even add, if I like to, in the back, or put an expansion in the back. It just goes through HP process, but the inside of the house, I could gut, as long as I left the shell.
Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, it's correct. We do not review interior changes, just those on the exterior. And there is a process prior to issuance of actual building permits where our office would review exterior changes. I'd say a majority of those, we approve over the counter whenever it's significant new construction or large additions that may require a public hearing before a hearing officer.
Okay. So my understanding is even with an overlay or in a historic district, I'll use my house as an example, if I want to demo my house, I'm in a historic area, I have to submit paperwork to demo my house in a historic preservation area, and then I have, is it one year? Is it, I don't know exactly how to ask the question. Is it a one-year hold, but I still, as a property rights owner, still has the ability to demo the house?
Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, yes. If someone came in after designation of the property on the register, I have three days as the Historic Preservation Officer, using the criteria and ordinance to determine whether to allow the demolition or not. In the case of a property being significant, as this one would, I would deny that demolition permit. And in the case, if it were a part of a larger district and the property were not a contributor to the district, I would approve the demolition. But in any case, within a district or where other properties are affected, a reuse plan would be required prior to demolition. But yes, you are correct that there is a one-year wait of demolition unless they go through a hearing process and get approval of economic hardship hearing that would allow the demolition sooner than one year, and it would not require a reuse plan.
Then I have one last question, because it talked about the value of the home. Does an overlay change the value of the home?
Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, I am not an expert. I'm not a realtor. I don't have, you know, I'm sure every situation is unique. I don't have the qualifications to necessarily say that.
Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, I don't believe that, you know, that question is really fact-specific and would depend upon a whole lot of factors that would really be argued in court. For example, the neighbors and mentioned smaller lots that were, an older home that was lost a few years back, and these smaller lots were put on there, and that being representative of a more typical, you know, single-family style of development. If you're comparing just lots, then that's, you know, probably an indicator of, well, there's some impact to that value. But if you look at the scarcity of large estate lots that front on Central Avenue that would command the prices like this, which is part of the testimony the property owner alluded to, is you can't put a value on the land that he owns. It's because of the scarcity of those large lots, and those are the points that would be fact-specific and arguable through court.
Well, I guess what I'm saying is, if there's an overlay placed on the home, does it change it from it selling from 1.8 million? I mean, I'm hearing that, the argument that I'm hearing, and I'm interpreting it, is that it would devalue the home. So...
Mayor, Councilwoman Pastor, I can't speak the specifics of this home, but the State Historic Preservation Office has done a study of our historic neighborhoods where they did document that they hold their value better than other properties, and so you can take what you want from that. This home is in a little bit different situation.
Sure. Mr. Young. You have to, please come to the microphone so people who are watching online can hear you.
If we were to accept the offer for the 1.3 million, that gentleman would have to come in and gut the house. As we've already discussed, he would have to maintain the facade, he would have to gut the house, and in order to make a house that is representative of that 1.3-acre lot on North Central, he would have to add 3,000 or 4,000 square feet to the back of the 1,600-square-foot house. He would remove all the tiki-tacky add-ons that have been added on over the years. You're now talking about probably close to $1 million. Now, my understanding is he has family members that are in the contracting business, so he could probably do it a little bit cheaper. So now you're not talking about a 1.3-acre investment, now you're talking about close to a 2.3 million-dollar investment. Councilwoman Pastor, your house is probably at its good value now. This house is not. This house has to have a million-dollar investment in order to bring it up to value. So you can't compare this house to your house or any other house that has an historic designation that is, where the historic value of the house has been completed and the historic renovation has been completed. This house is not historic. I will add that McElroy's only lived there for 14 years. The sisters, who we knew very, very close, we were very close to, lived there for close to 52 years. McElroy's found the house inadequate for them and had to build a second house to move into. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Councilwoman Stark.
Yes. Again, if in fact it got the overlay, they then could file with the National Register and then qualify for a 50% reduction in property taxes for 15 years, correct?
Mayor, Councilwoman Stark, that, they could apply for the National Register at any point in time, and the State Historic Preservation Office does work on, they have the property tax reduction program, and it's not quite 50%. It's close to it, it's just a little under, and they can get that for two 15-year periods.
Two 15 years. Okay. And also, right now, it's 1,600 square feet. So if they did any additions, they would have to go through you, but they may not want to do any additions. Some people actually are happy in a house that size. As a matter of fact, my husband and I live in a 1,300-square-foot house, and we're quite happy. So to assume that because they buy this house, they're going to double it or triple it, we don't know, but the fact is, is there was an offer on the table.
Thank you. Any additional councilmember comments? Roll call.
Mayor?
Councilman DeCicio.
Mayor?
Councilman DeCicio.
Mayor? Oh, can you hear me, mayor? Mayor, can you hear me?
We can hear you, councilman.
Okay, good. Sorry about that. Having some phone issues. Yeah, I find it interesting, I mean, I'm going to ask the question of staff that no one's asked, and they really should, because that's our legal team. Does anybody on our staff, from legal to planning, believe we can win this case?
And traditionally, we do not get legal advice in a public setting?
Well, I understand that, mayor. But you do want legal advice, because we're about to head into a lawsuit, and I think that the public should see where we're at. I mean, I have not heard one person from the legal team, not one, not one from staff or anywhere, say that this is a winnable case. Not one. So from my perspective, on a legal side of it, I think, and I believe strongly, that we're heading into some waters here that I think are going to be putting the city of Phoenix in financial jeopardy. That's on one side of it. On the second side of it, it deals down to a moral issue of whether or not we should be dictating what somebody's level of happiness should be, or what somebody's value should be. That's something that they have the right to do on their own. For us to get involved in a legal case and tell people exactly what their value should be and what it should not be is something unheard of. Nobody up here on the council, including myself, knows what the true value of their home is, because what ends up happening, the minute that you have controversy like this, you've already diminished the value of that property. That's already occurred. The fact that there would be a potential lawsuit, you've limited the amount of individuals who'd want to buy that property. That's common sense, and I don't think anybody can debate that that is not true. And if anyone on the council believes that controversy and that limiting someone's, I mean, by limiting their market by the individuals who could purchase that home in any way, shape, or form increases their value, then they ought to be doing it themselves. I didn't see anybody on the council go out there and try to market that home and try to bring buyers in. I haven't seen any of that. I've seen a lot of talk, but I haven't seen a lot of action on that. I feel bad for these individuals. They've been suffering through a bad medical crisis, and I'm not going to talk about what their medical situation is. That's something they can do on their own. But what has happened to these individuals, this man, this woman, is reprehensible, what's occurred here. It's literally a domination by some members who want to control their lives, and I just think it's morally wrong. These are good people. They've done everything right. The husband was a surgeon, or a trauma surgeon at St. Joe's, did everything right in our community, and this is how we're going to end up treating them. I understand the value of historic preservation, but there's a right way to do that. You find people are willing to buy it at a market value, and you work with them on it. But what's happening here is clearly a taking of their property rights, it's a taking of their financial security, they're retired individuals, and to do this to them, I think is morally wrong. And I won't be supporting it, mayor.
Any additional councilmember comments? Councilwoman Williams.
I think Councilman DeCicio raised good points, but in the past, I mean, these have always been controversial. I don't remember one that wasn't. Did we get sued? And if so, what was the results?
Mayor, Councilwoman Williams, the last time we came to you where we didn't have support from the property owner for the designation was at David and Gladys Wright House. That was the last time. So during my tenure, this is the second time we've come to you where we haven't had property owner support. You know, I am sure there's previous history to that, if you'd like. Kevin Wade is here from our office, who I think was maybe involved in one such case.
Thank you, mayor. Councilwoman Williams. Yes, there was a case shortly after Prop 207 was passed back in 2006. The following year, we did an expansion of the Encanto-Palm Croft Historic District at the neighborhood's request, and it covered the 1,300 block of West McDowell Road, the north side. And we knew there was opposition in that case, that the Neighborhood Association still encouraged us to pursue it, and actually, it was the city council who initiated it. I believe it was Councilman Linger at the time who represented that area. And the city council ended up approving it, and then there was a claim filed for $4 million by a developer who wanted to tear down one-story apartments on that block and replace them with a four-story condominium development. And the city council then reconsidered the HP zoning, debated it for a while, and ended up withdrawing, or excuse me, rescinding that approval back in 2007. That and the David Wright House are the only two cases that I'm aware of that have come up since that time. up since that time.
Any additional council member comments? Councilwoman Pastor.
What happened to the one on 19th Avenue in Thomas? That was a huge controversial one, and it went up for demo, and then they demoed it. Still an empty vacant lot. It was under Linger's southwest corner, yeah. You guys might not have been here. That's okay. I'll go look up the history.
I can tell you that Historic Preservation was not involved in that case.
Mayor, Councilmembers, I would point out an important fact that Kevin just referenced, is that under Prop 207, that once a valid claim would be submitted to the city, the city has 90 days to consider whether or not to keep that land use law or rescind that. And the applicant making the claim for Prop 207 has to provide an argument as part of their submittal, what's that diminution of value, and asks to have that removed. Then the council can decide, do they wish to go forward or, you know, rescind it at that time. And the property on 13th to 15th that Kevin referenced, the council decided to rescind it. In that particular set of circumstances, it was a multi-family zoned property, so by right, they could have gone back and developed like three- and four-story project on that particular parcel, even though it was an existing one-story garden apartment, where the facts today are that this is owned R110 and only allows single-family homes, you know, today. And so there will be an opportunity for the council to decide what they wish to do, you know, once a claim would be filed, and then also the facts are much different than that one where there was a $4 million claim, and that was the existing zoning that allowed a much more density than currently is allowed on the site.
Any additional council member comments or questions? Roll call. DeCicio?
No.
Garcia?
Yes.
Nowakowski?
I want to explain my vote. I'm normally very supportive of overlays, but seeing that the council member of that district, I really haven't had a chance to talk to the committee chair or even study the case, I would have to lean towards that council member, so I'll be a no also.
Pastor?
Yes.
Stark?
Yes.
Waring?
No.
Williams?
Yes.
Guardado?
Yes.
Gallego?
Yes.
The motion passes 6 to 3. That concludes the agendized portion of the council meeting. We will give people a moment to, who attended for agendized items, and while they leave, I will turn over to our city attorney to introduce public comment.
Thank you, Mayor. The citizen comment part of the agenda provides an opportunity for members of the public to address the city council for up to three minutes on issues of interest or concern to them. The Arizona Open Meeting Law permits the city council to listen to the comments from the public, but prohibits the members from discussing or taking action on matters presented during citizen comment.
We have a very large number of individuals here to address the council, so we will not be able to get to everyone. I'm going to read off the first, I'm going to read off the folks who we will call first. Many times, people have left by the end of this meeting, so the fact that you are not in the first 10 does not necessarily mean that you will not have the opportunity to speak, but this at least gives people a chance to prepare the order. Catherine Roxlow, Casey Billingsley, Sam McKenna, Sharon Landis, Jeannie Swindle, Jeffrey Reed, Patrick McMullen, Elizabeth Goff, Dale Straken, and Diane Habener. We will begin with Catherine. You'll have up to three minutes to address the council.
Mayor and council members, my name's Catherine Roxlow. I'm a citizen of Phoenix. I have two letters that I would like to give to the mayor and the council members. First of all, Linda Gruber has written a letter and asked me to submit it because I'm speaking. And then secondly, I have prepared a letter along with Jeannie Swindle, and we've made copies for everyone. I hope that everyone will receive a copy on the council and the mayor, and truly read it and listen to what we have to say. In this letter, we have listed some of our concerns with the drought pipeline project. We were only told about this project in October in a meeting, and that was a meeting just to tell us about it as a courtesy. It was already a done deal, it was decided. We did not, we're not allowed any public comment. At the end of our letter, we have five requests for the city council and the mayor. We are requesting five action items, and the two most pressing, I'd like to mention now because I only have three minutes. The first is press pause. Delay this project that we were told about in October and that's due to start construction in January. It's less than a month and away. Delay the start of the construction. It only seems fair to allow for community input into this project and careful consideration of our concerns. That's the city values. The city water department values say "community input." And the fifth item, there's three others, but the fifth is add the drought pipeline project design and alignment issue to, as an agenda item, on the December 18th city council meeting. We would like this to be a city council agenda item in the December 18th meeting. It's only fair, we're up here speaking to you, and we know you're all going to have blank faces, and you're not allowed to comment to us, but we have written letters, we've sent emails. I have sent, this is my third letter, and I've sent, I believe, two emails, and none of you have commented, other than a direct reply that's automatic that says, "We received it, it's public knowledge." None of you did. Catherine Sorensen has, but none of you have replied at all to our requests. And I know many people have requested that this be an action item, an item on the agenda, so that we can speak and have dialogue with you, and it hasn't occurred. So we're directly asking you right now to do that. On this letter, I have values listed, that the city has city values that have not been followed. Transparency, community input, and environmental stewardship have not been addressed on this problem. The other thing is the alignment study is flawed. I will stop speaking, but please read this letter. There's flaws to the design here today. Thank you.
Casey Billingsley, followed by Sam McKenna.
Mayor and council members, thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Casey Billingsley. I live at the corner of 22nd Street and Myrtle, where ground zero, where two of the pipelines will meet. As you can imagine, we're very concerned with not only the safety of our small children playing in close proximity to this 16-foot trench that will potentially be dug, about 12 to 15 feet away from our home structures in our neighborhood. We're not only concerned with the safety, but also the digging, blasting that potentially will pose a health risk to our children. One of my top concerns, I've asked the city water department, is the potential for airborne particulates, primarily toxins like mercury, to become airborne. I've done some preliminary research online. There's cases in other states where blasting of rocks, they've assured us they're not blasting, but Cox Capple started a project to dig an 18-inch trench in our neighborhood on the 4th of November. They were supposed to spend 48 hours doing it. It took them three weeks, including three weekends. And the reason why they can only work on the weekends is they can't close down to one lane in a school zone. So that means they close down one zone on Saturday and Sundays, so two to three years of work on Saturday and Sundays. So the work that Cox did, digging an 18-inch deep trench, was so loud with our doors and windows closed those three weekends, we couldn't even watch our TV. It was that loud. So they think this is going to be a real easy 16-foot-through-bedrock project. I don't think the city has done their homework. They have not released any, or plan to do, any health impact studies. That was confirmed by a water department representative today. And so I'm really concerned that the city water department has not done their homework to release any safety concerns, environmental concerns for this project, especially since it's in such close proximity to our homes. Again, this 16-foot trench that is in this very 33-foot wide, single, excuse me, foot lane, one way in the neighborhood, one way out. So I agree with urging you guys to please delay this project, so we can have the city do more research and provide us, the community, more safety and environmental information. Thank you.
Thank you. Sam will be followed by Sharon Landis.
Thank you, Mayor and council members, and city manager, city attorney, city clerk, staff, thank you for your time today. As you can see, we're trying to create a sea of orange for you. When we all came together, we, none of us really knew each other. All we knew was that there were three areas that were going to be impacted by this proposed water project. South of Lincoln, which I'm going to talk about, Granada Park area, north of Lincoln, which is Madison Heights and what Catherine referenced, and then the Preserve. So I want to let you know, I want to give you a flavor of Granada Park, south of Lincoln Drive, the street just east of Squaw Peak Drive, where Pice de Huayos is. We have about 250 homes. We have four routes out of the neighborhood. One is shared as an exit ramp to the 51 to Glendale. We have three routes in. The proposed project is going to affect three of our four routes. That south Granada Park neighborhood has a police substation. You have over 65 officers in and out day and night, which we really thank you guys for in blue. We have the K-9 folks, they train their dogs there. You have, it's a hub of the canal, two churches, and a synagogue. You have the Greek Orthodox Church, which does this big fundraiser every October and has hundreds of thousands of people in. To the east of that is Charles Schwab, which uses the buses to bring folks in and out. It's very vibrant. The community has the Sunny Slope Boys Track Team, the Xavier Cross Country Team. We have mommy-me groups, we have a veterans group. On the other side, we have the crossroads facility, the health facility, that helps employ some of your folks that go through the Phoenix at Work program. We have about 120 cars completely lining the park twice a week, two nights a week, for all those folks. We have visitors, we have herons that land in the park. Oh my gosh, we have, I could go on and on and on. We have the cyclists, the canals, we have the runners. This is not the same park that was created 40 years ago, and as I listen to some of the other folks, now I realize some of our houses might qualify for historic overlay, but beside the point. What we're asking is that you just push pause, as Catherine mentioned, and that you just look at the alternate routes. I don't know if this is a drought contingency plan, or if this is to get water to the 32nd Street revitalization project, but there are alternate routes. There are five different water stations, and there's got to be a better way. So we just simply ask that you maybe explore alternate routes, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Sharon will be followed by Jeannie Swindle.
Mayor Gallego, council members, my name is Sharon Landis. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. First, I think it's important for you to understand that my neighborhood, which is Madison Heights, is not a neighborhood that you drive through. It's a neighborhood that you drive to, because it does not have a through street. It's bounded on the south by Lincoln, it's bounded on the west by Route 51, on the north and the east by the Mountain Preserve. Being able to safely walk in this neighborhood without the danger of noise, of major car and truck traffic, is the big reason that many of us located there. Our neighborhood is a walking neighborhood. Rarely do you drive from your home to Lincoln Boulevard without seeing lots of people on foot traffic. It's vital to our quality of life, and it would be seriously impacted by the proposed pipeline construction. We see seniors walking at all hours of the day and night, often by themselves, and often walking their dogs. They stop and visit with other neighbors. It's a very neighborly neighborhood. We see parents pushing baby carriages, we see children on skateboards and bicycles, we see kids walking to and from school, and we see parents walking their small children to school, by which the new pipeline is scheduled to be laid. We also see our Orthodox Jewish neighbors walking to their nearby synagogue on weekends and on their religious holidays, and I wonder what they will do if they cannot follow the tenets of their religion. We also see horses walking. Horses are, we have about, I think, three or four horse properties in our neighborhood, and it's lovely to see them walking toward the Preserve. And I think we should ask ourselves, how many large cities in America can say that they have horses walking through their neighborhoods? And are we going to wipe out this precious part of our Arizona heritage for a few years? So do Phoenix residents value this lifestyle that we have in our neighborhood? Do our current council members support quality of life as an important decision-making component? I think at a basic level, the answer is yes, but it does not appear to me to have been considered in the pipeline location decision. So we ask you for a delay of this project until these issues are fully addressed.
Jeannie will be followed by Jeffrey Reed.
Thank you, Mayor Gallego, as well as council members. My name is Jeannie Swindle. I live at 7640 North 22nd Street, three houses south of the trailhead at the end of 22nd Street into Phoenix Mountain Preserve, of which I hike every single morning with my husband, who is following me here, and is a huge reason that I bought the house that I did 22 years ago when I moved here from Miami, Florida. Miami, Florida is very flat. This is a very exciting country when you look at the mountains that we have. And I do enjoy it every day, and I'm very, very concerned, first of all, that a three-year, $300 million project, city project, hasn't been given the attention, and more importantly, the opportunity for the input of the community to help direct, or at least give input, in terms of what some of the alternative routes were. We think that, I'm representing not only as a neighbor and having the, or as a resident and homeowner, but also the neighborhood that is south of Lincoln, Granada Park, which Sharon and Sam McKenna spoke about, the area north of Lincoln, and Lincoln Drive, which as you well know, is a very heavily trafficked area, and the Preserve. But let me talk about the neighborhoods for a moment before we get to the Preserve. In that, this kind of a project, three years, starting south, once you get to the north side of it, you are going to have heavy equipment coming up those streets that were just assessed as residential, not being able to be reduced and handled, really, for the neighborhood as one lane. But that heavy equipment is not only going to have to come back and forth, and then take in and take out debris that they have, but that's the duration of the project. And it's easy to say, okay, so three years, okay, there might be delays, it could turn into four, it could be five years. Okay, so you're going to be inconvenienced for five years. That's a really, really long time, but that is nothing compared to the length of time it will take the Preserve to be mitigated, if you will, and come back to its natural state. It never will. To have a hole bore through the mountain- To have a hole bore through the mountains there is, it's abominable. So as a citizen, as a resident, as a homeowner, and as a member who, of the community, who loves the quality of life that we have here in Phoenix, I am asking with the rest of us here representing this group to press pause. Don't start something that is that big of a project in January or the beginning of February if it's been delayed somewhat. Take some time to really understand it yourselves, so that you can see why we're passionate about this. Thank you.
Thank you. Jeffrey Reed, followed by Patrick McMullin.
I'd like to yield to Jacquet Brown.
Then Patrick McMullin will be next.
Good afternoon. My name is Jacqueline Brown, and I-
I'm sorry, Patrick McMullin is next.
Oh, I'm sorry. I yielded. She wants to-
Jeffrey Reed, did Patrick McMullin also yield?
I yielded to Jackie.
She's asking for Jackie to speak for him.
In Luba?
We are not going to be able to get to everyone, so we're trying-
Can you speak for Jess?
Patrick McMullin is our next speaker.
Go ahead.
My name is Patrick McMullin. I live at 1601 West Windrose Drive, like 19th Avenue, Thunderbird up there. I've got the Preserve right behind us in our house. It's a beautiful place, and I love the Preserve. I love the uniqueness of the city of Phoenix preserving these lands in the downtown area. It's great. It's really great. And that, what I'm also doing is that I have a petition pursuant to Chapter 4, Section 22, the Phoenix City Charter, and I have copies for the, for the mayor and for the council. And so this is the letter of petition, and I'm just going to go over it very quickly. So if I can give you these. And there's an attachment with the petition, and that is a letter. What I'm also doing, I'm, it's amazing sometimes that I'm retired, but I'm, I'm also the acting president for the Phoenix Mountain Preservation Council. I've been to the city council and spoke with the mayor over the last few years. This is one of the best spots, best group of people there are, and it's always an honor to come here and, and give you my idea as just a private citizen. So you've got the copies, and I'm just going to go over this real quickly. What I'm here for is, we're concerned about, it's regarding the Phoenix Water Services Department's proposed construction of the 66-inch water pipeline from the 24th Street Water Treatment Plant to 32nd Street and Bell as part of the project to supplement the city water supply. While I appreciate the importance of investing in reliable future water supply, which is one of the things that I did when I was actually working, worked for the tribes, I am concerned that the Water Services Department has exceeded their decision-making authority and are consequently denying the public and the city, Phoenix City Council, their legal rights under the Phoenix City Charter to determine the fate of the Phoenix Mountain Preserves. As outlined further in that attachment, there's details in there and attached there. Without providing specific details, boy, that went really quickly. So my points are oversight hearing, would like that, full evaluation of all alternatives, the halt of the project development until the resolution. If you can do that as soon as possible, that would be great. And then comply with the requirements under Chapter 26 of the city charter. And that is, it's a city council vote or a public vote. And those details are in this, and please review those. And thank you for your time, and also thank you for having the Phoenix Preservation, I mean the preserves. I'm Vietnam Vet, you know, '71, '73, and I live close to that because it's where my, it's where my important area is. Support forces, '71, '73. Thank you.
Thank you. Libby Goff, followed by Dale Strayken.
Yes, I'm short. My name is Libby Goff, or Elizabeth Goff. I live at 4718 North 33rd Street in Phoenix. I'm here speaking as an individual today. I am also a member of the Board of Directors for the Phoenix Mountain Preserve Council. Matter of fact, I'm the secretary. I also would like to deliver a letter from a fellow member of the Preserve Council. She's somebody that was a past board member for the Parks Board and several other things within the city of Phoenix. She's been very active in parks in general. So please read her letter. I am somebody who hikes in the Preserve on a regular basis. The trailhead that would be affected by the water pipe project, the 22nd Street trailhead is one that I'm often at, and, and it would hurt me, I mean emotionally, it's just awful to think of messing up the trailhead and that, that whole area, or any part of the Preserve, because you, you can't come back and plant plants, even if they're native plants. The desert will never be the same. The whole reason we have a Preserve is to preserve it. So what I'm asking for is what we have asked for in the, in the Preserve Council's petition. We would like an oversight hearing to take a look at this project. We would like a full evaluation of the alternatives. Halt the project until further resolution, and comply with Chapter 26 of the Phoenix Charter, which is the part that applies to the Preserve. We have consulted with our attorney, and, and if you look at it, in order to build something through the Preserve, not leave it as a Preserve, that would require either the city council looking at the situation and deciding it is necessary to go through the Preserve, or bring it to a vote of the people. Having the, the city council vote on it when it was buried in, in some budget stuff is not the same thing. That doesn't, I, I wonder if city council members realized that they were going to be going through the Preserve at all. We, we, again, the Preserve is not like other areas where you have different environments. It's not like the jungle. It does not recover well. It's very fragile. And, and after driving dump trucks full of dirt through and digging tunnels through the ridges, it will never be the same. Thank you very much.
Mayor? Mayor?
Councilman DeCecio.
Thank you, and I know we're not allowed to legally respond back to any of that, but I'd like to ask staff, they're supposed to be getting back with me. We had multiple alternatives that we're going to be looking at, and I know that they're working hard on it, and they are working hard on it. That would bypass the Preserve, basically follow the 51 as much as possible, and I'm wondering if they would be able to get back with me maybe near the middle to the end of next week? I know that they're still evaluating that, looking at costs, and doing, you know, a tremendous job at negotiating and looking at the alternatives, because it also includes working with the state of Arizona. So it's not an easy chore that we are asking staff to do to come back with this alternative, and I'm very upbeat about it. But I'd like to see if staff would just, you know, at least get back with me. If they can, if not, it's okay. Right now, time is in our favor on this thing because they're doing, they're doing a tremendous job. They really are, of trying to find this alternative. They've been working on one, and I'd like to see what they come back with, Mayor.
Thank you. Yes, staff is working very, very hard on this issue. Dale Strayken, followed by Diane Habener.
I would like to yield my, your, your free party.
I'm sorry, are you Dale?
Yeah.
And you would like Diane, who is next? I called next? Okay. Diane, please come forward. What?
Hi, my name is Diane Habener, and I live at 25312 North 16th Avenue, and I'm actually here to speak to item number 16 that was open for public hearing, but we arrived 10 minutes late and the hearing was closed. So anyway, I live up, this is off of the Happy Valley area, up in there, and anyway, I live about 350 feet from the proposed annexation property. Actually, my property is on Desert Hollow, and I'm just one parcel from where this one would be. We've always been told that the area would be, would stay rural residential, and 13 days ago, a sign went up saying that this was open to annexation, and we really haven't even had a chance, as a neighborhood, to talk to people, but the people we have all spoken to haven't been in favor of it. I do have a letter here to give to each of you from one of my neighbors that wasn't able to come, and I'd like to read most of it because it's really well said. We're writing, "In lieu of attending the meeting, as a notification was posted allowing an extremely short window to modify one's work schedule this time of year, and we were unable to do so." I'd also like to say that the neighbors across the street from me raise, have racehorses, and they had a horse running today, so they were unable to attend. The neighbor directly across the street was having a chemotherapy treatment today, so she couldn't come. The people immediately to the north were working, and they were unable to come. Not just a few of the people that I've spoken with. "We join with many of our neighbors, homeowners, most of whom have lived there numerous years while raising families, in opposing the annexation by the city." I would like to point out before I go into detail as to why we oppose this, that the parcel is already listed with a commercial realtor, and it's, it is listed being zone commercial, and it's advertised for commercial development, which clearly indicates this annexation request is simply being done to change the current zoning. I implore all or any one of you to please sit back and take a second look at what this does to those of us that have built their lives in a neighborhood that for years has been designated by the Deer Valley Planning Commission as a residential area. I'm aware that as residents of a county island, you do not technically represent us, but I hope and believe that enough of you might take a step back to help maintain one of the unique features that make up many areas across Arizona, rural areas nestled within the city boundaries. Once again, we find ourselves trying to defend our homes since 1988. They lived there, oh my goodness. And I lived there since 2000. Anyway, it's a unique area. It's, it's bounded by CAP on one side and 19th Avenue and Happy Valley. So if that area remains rural, there's, and there's plenty of other places to develop across the street. There's all kinds of development going on.
Thank you.
But this is a unique area that would be, we really would like to maintain that. And I'm sure more of us are going to be writing letters, and you'll hear from us. But we need more time. Thank you.
Thank you. And that item, we just had a public hearing, it will, it is back on a council, future item for, for action. We have completed the first 10 who I called. Jacqueline Brown.
My name is Jacqueline Brown, and thank you for having us, and I concur with all of my neighbors and friends. I had brought a big map, but they took it. Well, try and like show, show it up here. Created a map of, this is the north 22nd Street where the pipeline will be going down and into the Preserve. And I had pulled some source info and quotes from the City of Phoenix Water Services Department Design Standards and Manual. And the number one quote I would like to bring up to you is, it says, "Where possible, the private streets under which the city water and sewer mains are located shall have a minimum of two ingress and egress points." So what I hear there and wanted to point out is that north of this wash right here, all of these neighborhoods only have one ingress/egress, which causes a major safety hazard for us up there. Another source info we read was the minimum easement width for a water main with a diameter greater than 30 inches is 80 feet. Thus, the city would typically run a 66-inch water main up a major arterial street and not up a residential street like 22nd Street, which has the width of only 38 feet. So, and calculating that out, city's own guidelines should not see a water main larger than 12 inches placed under such a street. Another one I had looked up was, "The Water Services Department requires safe and quick access to all city water and sewer mains at all times in order to repair main breaks, install taps, and perform preventative maintenance." So with reading that, I'm hearing that if a pipe breaks, or that they want to install a tap, they will be going through the Preserve again. So they're going to, you know, repair it after they put it in, but then it could potentially break, or they could potentially need to add some things to it. So just with one of my neighbors talking about the mineral report, and that's the first time I heard of that, but Piesto de Huatpec is mercury mine. It's, it used to be a mercury deposit, so I can imagine that maybe some, some of this might bring up a lot of mercury. So that would be a concern of mine, so. Thank you for listening.
Thank you for your testimony. If he's here, our final comment is from David Geronda.
Mayor and council members, I am David C. Geronda, known as a past president and longtime board member of the Phoenix Mountains Preservation Council. But today, I am representing the previous Squaw Peak Citizens Advisory Committee for the design of the SR-51 freeway through Dreamy Draw circa 1991. At that time, we had formed with the city and ADOT in agreement to completely abandon what was the northbound right-of-way for traffic and utilities through Dreamy Draw in exchange for placing the entire right-of-way for both northbound and southbound lanes in the west portion of Dreamy Draw. As you know, this was completely agreed upon by the city and ADOT, completely abandoning the previous use for traffic and utilities in the area of the former northbound lanes. You may not have been advised that this is the area of the proposed new 66-inch water line alignment through Dreamy Draw, which was agreed, quote, "in stone," as we citizens thought, "that would never again be used for traffic or utilities." This proposed 66-inch water main will violate a firm agreement with the citizens in disregard of an acknowledged compromise to minimize adverse impact of the Dreamy Draw Park portion of the dedicated mountain, Phoenix Mountains Preserve, which has been paramount for preservation by all previous city councils. I request that you regard this as an extreme conservation effort that Phoenix, as it is honored worldwide, for our preservation of our open spaces. Thank you very much.
I really like the shirt. I love your shirt. I remember that.
Pardon?
I remember that shirt.
You sold it to me. You sold it to me.
And it really lasted, didn't it? That's been, what, 30 years ago?
So Carlos is, it only went to the shirt, huh?
It was a while. I'm older than I look, though.
Oh, just a kid.
Thank you. We did have 12 under individuals wishing to address the council in opposition to the pipeline, as well as individuals wishing to speak on other topics. We are adjourned.